Pledge.
Please join me to recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic.
For which stand.
One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it. And the next agenda item, roll call. With Ms. Medina, conduct the roll call, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair, and staff. I'll now take attendance Commissioner Oblaza.
Here.
Commissioner Albana.
Here.
Vice Chair Alcorn.
Here.
Commissioner Belong.
Present.
Commissioner Chua.
Here.
Commissioner Chuan.
Here.
And Chair Tao.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Medina. We appreciate it. And the next agenda item here is a conflict of interest declaration. City Attorney, if you will, poll the Commission, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Ask whether any of the Commissioners have a conflict of interest on any of the items before you tonight?
None for me.
None for me.
None for the Chair.
I'm just, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Belong, you have the floor. Go ahead, please.
I'm disclosing on the record that I work with the labor organization that works with the applicant tonight.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And the City Attorney, uh. You're in yet, um, does that constitute?
So. Yeah, Commissioner Belong, will you?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna recuse myself from tonight's agenda item.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Belong. Has disclosed a conflict of interest on the item, tonight's item on the agenda, and will be recusing himself from that item tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And the next agenda item, here's approval of the agenda. And, um. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Chuan, a motion in a second.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting of December ninth, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh, is that Commissioner Oblaza, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we'll motion in the, uh, in a second, and so I'll go down the, go down the row. And, uh, for the, for the votes, Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Oblaza. Okay, that's aye, and Commissioner Belong.
Aye.
Um, Commissioner, uh, Chua.
Aye.
Commissioner Chuan.
Aye.
Vice Chair.
Aye.
Here is aye, seven, nothing. Um, approval of the, of the agenda for this evening. Thank you. Um, announcement, uh, next agenda item, announcement, Commissioners, any announcement? Okay, seeing none. Staff, Director, do you have any announcements, please?
Thank you, Chair. I believe the Planning Manager has a, an announcement about the general plan update, and then I have a quick announcement following hers.
Please.
Okay, thank you, Ned. Um, good evening. Uh, sorry. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners, I apologize. Um, I wanted to just, um, leave, make a brief announcement that the project team has completed a draft of the general plan. And the draft, um, environmental impact report. Uh, for the general plan update and has, um, let the Planning Commission, the City Council, and the General Plan Advisory Commission, our committee know about it. And now we are asking for comments and input from the community about the general plan. So we are going to be holding an online public workshop on December fourteenth, that's next Monday, at five thirty PM. The virtual workshop will provide an opportunity to learn more about the draft general plan. Answer community questions and receive additional community input and comments. Um, and the meeting, information is actually on the general plan webpage. We can send that out to you if you'd like to get, um, to be able to link up to the Zoom meeting. Uh, and we, um, and invite you to attend if you'd like, and we'll be compiling all of those comments. And presenting that to both the Planning Commission and City Council for consideration. And at this point, we are anticipating bringing the draft general plan and the draft EIR, uh, to the Planning Commission on January twenty seventh. And then hopefully we'll be able to bring the plan to the City Council either in late February or, or the first meeting in March. If you have any questions, please let me know. Um, you can contact or submit any comments to me directly, uh, via email. You can call me, um, or if you have any questions, um, I'm happy to answer now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garner, and, um, Planning Director, you have announcement as well.
Yes, I just wanted to mention, well, first I'll, I'll preface my comment, my announcement, my, again, congratulating Commissioner Chua on her, uh, recent win in the election. And with her, um, she will, it's my understanding she'll be sworn in next Tuesday at the council meeting. And so that will create an open seat on the Planning Commission. So I just wanted to make a general announcement, um, to the Planning Commissioners, if you know of anyone who is interested in serving on the Planning Commission. Or, yeah, to anyone from the general public who is watching tonight's meeting. Um, the application form for an appointment to the Planning Commission or any city commission is available on the City Clerk's webpage on the city's website. The applications are now being accepted. Um, it's a very simple form. There's a supplemental form with a few questions on it. And the appointment will be made by Mayor Tran in the new year, uh, with consent from the City Council. So if you have an interest in serving on this wonderful planning commission, we have a lot of, uh, great projects that come forward, then we would welcome any and all applications, uh, that we can review and, uh. Proceed with the, with Mayor Tran's appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Appreciate it. Uh, any other announcements? Okay, seeing none. Uh, moving on to the next agenda item, that's a public forum. Uh, those interested are invited to address Planning Commission on any subject that are not on tonight's agenda. Orally via a Zoom webinar instructions as above in the, uh, in tonight's, uh, agenda. Um, speakers may provide their name and city of residence for the, uh, recording secretary's record. Um, any comments, um, any comments, uh, may be limited to three minutes or less. As an item not listed on the agenda, no responses required from city staff or the Planning Commission. And no action can be taken. Planning Commission may instruct the staff to place the item on their future meeting agenda. Um, Ms. Medina, any, uh, any public comments on, on the public forum?
Hi, Chair. I don't see anybody in the queue to, um, anybody in the queue for a public forum.
Okay, thank you very much. And, um, and we're moving on to the next, uh, agenda item, approval of the minutes. And so there are two, uh, two meeting minutes, uh, from the, the previous, uh, Planning Commission meetings, uh, waiting for approvals. And, uh, Chair will, uh, ask for, uh, motion on the August twenty nine, twenty six, twenty twenty, uh, meeting, uh, meeting minutes. Um, any, any changes to the minutes, Commissioners? Seeing none. Staff, any changes to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. I'm sorry.
No changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so let's, uh, if we can, uh, go ahead, uh, do a vote on the, on the, um, the August twenty sixth, uh, meeting minutes. And, uh. Um, so can I have a, uh, vote on it from Commissioner Albana?
Yes, I move for the minutes of the mid, of August twenty sixth, Wednesday, to be approved.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Belong.
Second.
Okay. Um, okay, and, uh, so I'll go ahead and call, call down the row, and Commissioner Albana, your vote.
Aye.
Hey, Commissioner Belong.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Oblaza.
Aye.
Commissioner Chuan.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Chua.
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Alcorn.
Aye.
Chair, as I as well, seven, nothing, um, for, uh, for the approval of the August twenty sixth, twenty twenty meeting minutes. And, uh, so, uh, the next, um, the next one is the September ninth, twenty twenty, uh, meeting agenda. Do I have a motion on, on that?
I'll make a motion next at the minute.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. One more motion by Commissioner Belong, second by Commissioner Chuan, and I'll, I'll also call off for the votes as well. Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Belong.
Aye.
Commissioner Oblaza.
Aye.
Commissioner Chuan.
Aye.
Commissioner Chua.
Aye.
Vice Chair Alcorn.
Aye.
Here is I as well, um, past seven, nothing for the September ninth, twenty twenty, um, meeting minutes. Thank you all very much. And that the next, um, agenda item, here's the public hearing, um, tonight, uh, so, uh, Planning Director, uh, your floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have just one item on our agenda for tonight. It's a request for a conditional use permit for a vocational school. Uh, at eighteen seventy-three Barber Lane. Uh, this is a vocational school for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. They have a electrical apprenticeship program. That will be relocating to Milpitas. And together with a conditional use permit, there's also a site development permit for some new signage on the site. And all of the details about this new, uh, project will be provided by our senior planner, Michael Fassati, who has, uh, prepared the staff report and has a presentation for you. I'll turn it over to Michael.
Uh, Planning Director, before we, uh, begin, just noting again, uh, Commissioner Belong will not be participating, so he, he may want to just, um, as a, as a formality. Um, mute and maybe black the screen or. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Thompson. Thank you, Planning Commission. I'm Michael Fassati, uh, Senior Planner here with the City Milpitas. And the item in front of you is an application for conditional use permit and site development permit. Uh, next slide, please. The application is from the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, also known as the IBW. And the Electrical Joint Apprenticeship and Training Committee, also known as EJAC. The conditional use permit is to allow the operation of an apprenticeship vocational school to be located at one eight seven three Barber Lane. And a site development permit is to allow the installation of a new freestanding sign up to nine, nine feet in height. Next slide, please. This is an aerial image of the IBW EJAC site. Near the intersection of Barber Lane and McCarthy Boulevard, uh, to kind of give you a little more proximity, near the existing Sheraton and Sonesta Hotel. Along the west side of Milpitas, west of eight eighty. The majority of properties in that area are either industrial or hospitality sector. Next slide, please. This is the zoning map of the property. The project site zoning designation of industrial park and is identified with the red outline. The project site is surrounded by industrial park properties to the north, east, and west, and general commercial to the south, where the Sonesta Hotel lies. Next slide, please. As previously stated, the CUP is to allow the operation, uh, for the proposed vocational school. If approved, the EJAC would move to the location of Barber Lane and convert the existing industrial building into a state-of-the-art training facility. The building would operate in twofold with typical office hours. For the IBW Union three thirty-two, and in the evening, provide classroom instruction in the principles of electrical theory. The following image is an example of a classroom with, within a typical apprenticeship facility. Per the applicant, the EJAC would provide instruction to approximately two hundred and fifty apprentices per evening during a typical work week with limited group instruction. On occasional weekends. Next slide, please. Operational and traffic impacts were analyzed as with every conditional use permit. And it was determined that the operation of the vocational school would not negatively affect the industrial or commercial neighborhood. Operational aspects have been identified to be consistent with what is typical for an industrial business, in that all the uses associated with. Completing the use can be completed indoors. The applicant submitted a trip generation memo that was drafted by a transportation consultant and peer reviewed by the city's traffic engineer. Within the memo, it was determined that the project would generate fewer daily trips than, than existing research and development facility. Staff also reviewed the project in terms of what we call vehicle miles traveled, also known as VMT. The conclusion was that due to the proximity of the existing location in San Jose from the future facility. That the proposed use would not increase congestion within the traffic network of Santa Clara County that would trigger a significant impact. Next slide, please. The IBW and EJAC would leave the building as is, with the exception of minor modifications to the interior and around the site. The image on the left is an example of outdoor area improvements by installing LED lighting, concrete colored, colored concrete paving. And concrete seating for some outdoor resting areas. These areas would be used by either students or staff to congregate during breaks. The plan is also to reface the existing monument sign with new signage. The signage, there's a currently a monument sign there. The applicant would take over that sign and reface it with the new sign. By using channel letters that would be backlit. This means that the light is behind the letters of the sign and creates a glow around the letters of the sign. You'll notice in the staff report, it's identified that one protected tree has been included in the application for removal, uh, due to its eventual decay. Next slide, please. Near the front of the entrance between the street and the, the front door, the IBW and EJAC would like to install a freestanding sign up to nine feet in height. The EJAC is actually looking to change their branding. For example, the agency is looking to update its name into, from Santa Clara Electrical Joint Apprenticeship and Training Committee. Into the Electrical Training Alliance of Silicon Valley. The branding associated with the new name has not yet been chosen. As such, the exact look of the sign is not complete. In an effort to obtain partial approval for the sign, a condition has been added to the resolution to require additional review by the planning department. With the final design, color, and material subject to approval of, of the planning director, once that branding and associated image has been determined. But the image here is a mock-up of what the sign will generally look like and the height associated with that sign. Next slide, please. Findings have been made in the affirmative for the project as discussed within the staff report in detail. In summary, the use is not detrimental to the community and is consistent with the Milpitas general plan and zoning ordinance. And the proposed signage in context meets the standards set forth in the zoning code. Next slide, please. Staff has also found the project to be exempt from CEQA per three specific sections in the CEQA guidelines. Section fifteen three oh one covers the use within existing building. Section fifteen three oh three covers the new construction being proposed. And section fifteen one eight three covers the fact that the project is an allowable use for the general plan and zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. Postcards were noticed, um, the project was noticed with postcards, as well as a notice was placed within the Milpitas post and city website. The city has not received any responses to date. Next slide, please. In closing, staff recommends opening and closing the public hearing, uh, considering the exceptions in accordance with the California Environmental Equality Act. And adopting resolution twenty dash zero two one approving conditional use permit UP twenty dash zero 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 four. Site development permit number SD twenty dash zero zero one four, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Furthermore, I'd like to notify the Planning Commission that Bud Kobsa, as the designer, and Ralph Gurwitz as the consultant. Along, as well as Daniel Romero, Jared Gamble, and Doug Lung from the IBW are present in the audience. This concludes staff summary of the proposed project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steph. Uh, does the applicant have a, uh, presentation? Mr. Fassati, does the applicant have a presentation to share?
I was gonna, um, address it, not that I'm aware of. I noticed, uh, Mr. Kobsa unmuted his phone, so I didn't, um, unmuted his mic, so I didn't want to overstep.
Not a problem. So I just want to make sure that, that, uh, the applicant have an opportunity to, to present if they have a, a presentation they'd like to share. Seeing none. Um, and, um, so circling back to, uh, to Commission. Any questions for the staff and, and/or the applicant, um, this, this evening? Okay, and, uh, um, Planning Director Thomas, uh, do we also have, uh, Mr. Steve Chen from the Traffic, uh, Traffic Division of the City? Um, on tonight's, uh, on tonight's, uh, discussions as well?
Yes, the, the city's traffic engineer is here if you have any questions regarding the, the traffic study that was completed for this project.
Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, Commissioners, um, sort of following that the previous meetings that, uh, set up process, we, we're trying out with regards to, um. Uh, inquiry with the, the city, uh, the city department liaisons, um, any particular questions for, uh, for Mr. Chen from the Traffic Division? Okay, seeing none. And, uh, um, Mr. Bill Todd with, uh, believe is a, uh, building official is here as well.
That's correct.
Okay, and, uh, uh, any, any questions from the Commissioners to Mr. Todd at, at the Building Department? Okay, seeing none. Okay, um, some, Mr. Todd and the Mr. Chen, I'd like to, uh, go ahead to, um, excuse you all from this eve, this evening's proceedings. And with, Albana, thank you very much for your participation, um, this evening. So, um, the Chair has a few questions for the, uh, for staff. So in terms of the signage that was, uh, that's intended, you know, in the resolution, uh, has noted, you know, will be, uh, with diffuse light, you know, onto the finish. Uh, can we, uh, make sure that during the, the process of designing and the, the, uh, and the contemplating of finish for the, for the, for the sign itself? That we're able to make sure it's, it, the finish does not become highly reflective, uh, so that it will be, become blinding, uh, to the, to the drivers with uncommon, uh, trap, uh, vehicle lights?
Yes, um, Chair Tao, the, that's actually, there's, um, I, I was reviewing the sign ordinance, uh. Yesterday, and I noticed that actually reflective signs are, um, not allowed in the city in general, but we can definitely make sure that the, the signage and the metal coating is, is matted. So it won't affect the drivers nearby.
Absolutely appreciate it. You know, since it's a fairly large sign and prominent sign, we just want, um, take the extra precaution. And also, um, based on the signage, uh, design, you know, the address number, it looks like it's located at the bottom. So if we can also coordinate the landscaping plan so that, um, you know, that the landscaping does not, uh, does not obscure or cover the address numbers. For those in, uh, inquiring for the, for the, for the location.
Consider it done.
Thank you. And, um. Question for the, question for the applicant. Um, so this particular, um, uh, building here is only intending on, um, hosting functions. That's related to the training and the, and the, the onsite activities. Is it, is it ever intended for hosting, um, other functions or other, um, other entities? Uh, using the, using this, uh, site here for, uh, for meeting purposes or whatnots?
This is Bud. Daniel, do you want to answer that?
Sure.
Can you hear me? How about now?
Uh, you're still echoing, uh, a little bit, so if a microphone can be a little bit closer to you, it'd be great.
Can you, how about now? Is that better?
Ten thousand percent better. Yes, please.
Um, one, two, three, testing.
You're, you're good.
Am I good?
You're good.
All right. So, uh, thanks for the Commissioners, and thanks for all the work of the Planning Department and getting this application to you guys. Um, the, the Electrical Training Center of Silicon Valley will be mostly catered to the training of apprentices. The continuing training for journey level apprentice, uh, journey level workers. Um, there will be some hosting for industry partners, um, on, on a, as it comes about. Uh, but it, it is not intended for the general use of rental property or catering for outside groups. Um, in, in the past, we have done, uh, outreach programs for, for high schools and, and, uh, high schools and. You know, uh, activities for, for, for kids or for, uh, you know, training programs. Uh, but not for the general public, just to rent the place out for, for use.
Thank you very much for the clarification. We appreciate it. And, uh, Chair, there's one more question for, uh, Mr. Fassati. Um, uh, circling back to the presentation on the zoning map. Um, just want to make sure the zoning map colors is consistent with the, uh, the M, the M zone that would, or MP zone that which is intending, intended for this particular location.
I noticed, uh, that myself, the cu, the colors are, um, are limited in regards to the, this. The GIS program that we use. I can confirm that all the properties associated, um, east, north, and west are. Industrial park as well as general commercial, uh, along the south.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the clarification. We appreciate it. Um, so Commissioners, um, any questions for both the staff and the applicant? If seeing none, um, uh, this is a public hearing, um, and, uh, so, um, Ms. Medina, do we have any, uh, public comments on, on this, uh, uh, public hearing item?
Uh, Chair, uh, just excuse the interruption. I saw that, um, uh, Commissioner Chua had her hand up.
Uh, my apologies. Commissioner Chua, please.
Uh, who is it? Is the EDC, uh, here? Daniel, I, I thought I saw Daniel on the panel. Economic Development Team.
Oh, I don't believe, um, I don't believe he's here tonight.
Through, uh, through the Chair, Daniel Romero, uh, he's a representative. He had, I think he had his phone and his computer on, so.
Okay, thanks. I was just gonna ask how we came about, uh, having a, a good, uh, project like this. How, how we were able to entice them to come to Milpitas. I guess I can ask the applicant about that.
So, um, if I may, the, uh, we have been looking for a training center, a new location for a training center for, for many years. Um, and one of the specific requirements that we needed was enough parking to accommodate all the apprentices coming to, for training. Um, and it just, uh, a stroke of, of luck and, um, and, uh, good findings that everything came into fruition. And we found the appropriate building and, uh, we, one of our, our training, our train director, Robert Moreno, has an experience with your, with the city of Milpitas. And he spoke very highly as to the Planning Commission and the Building Department and how that'll be, uh, how we could make things work without, uh, you know. You know, easily. So, uh, so then we went ahead and moved forward in the project.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Um, Commissioners, any other Commissioners have, uh, comments? Okay, um, seeing none and no virtual raised hand. And thank you, Commissioner Chuan, for not, notating the, uh, the earlier comment. And, uh, so this has been the public hearing, um, and, uh, turning to, uh, Ms. Medina, and, uh, do we have any public comments?
Hi, Chair. We have nobody in the queue for public comment.
Thank you very much. And, uh, can I have a motion to go ahead and close the public hearing segment?
Move to close.
Thank you, Commissioner Oblaza. Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair. And all in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you very much. And, uh, the public hearing is closed. So Commissioners, um, discussions, uh, motions? Any discussions, uh, Commissioner Chuan, please?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to consider the exemption in accordance with CEQA and adopt resolution number two zero dash zero two one. Approving conditional use permit number UP two zero dash zero 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 four. And site development permit number SD two zero dash zero zero one four, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Second.
Okay, so we have a, a motion by Commissioner Tron, and I, uh, heard the first, the second from my Vice Chair, uh, Alcorn. And so, uh, Chair will go down the Commissioners for the vote. Uh, Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Belong, uh, I'm sorry, um, my apologies on that one. Uh, Commissioner Oblaza.
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chuan.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Chua.
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Alcorn.
Aye.
Here's I as well. So, um, motion passes six, zero. There's I as well, so motion passes six, zero with one, one abstain. And, and the congratulations to the, to IBW and the representatives and your, your, for tonight's application. And all the best to you going forward. Thank you very much. And moving on to the next, next agenda item here, sorry, let me get the agenda back on here. We have no other business and Chair just like to take this, this time here and like to thank all the staff, you know, during a very trying year and, you know, going above and beyond the call of duties and working at less than ideal conditions. We really appreciate all the work that, which you have done remotely or in person and facilitating the going forward with the, the city's planning, planning process. We appreciate it. And I'd like to thank the, all the Commissioners, this being the, the last meeting, the last regularly scheduled Planning Commission meetings for the year twenty twenty. Chair would like to thank all the Commissioners for your participation and, and being part of the community, and being a Planning Commissioner to, on, on, on this evening. And with that said, and also congratulations to Commissioner Chua for your, for your continuing service in a different capacity going forward.
Chair, if I may, I, I just would like to thank all the Planning Commissioners that I've worked with the past and the present. According to a quote from Robert Kennedy says, "The purpose of life is to contribute in some way to making things better." And I think this commission does that with the help, oh, with, with a big help from the, the planning staff. And I would like to specifically thank each and every one of you. Thank you for working with me the last four years. I want to thank Ellerin and his team. They're always behind the scene, but they're, they make us look good and they, they make us, it's, it's so smooth that we don't see them because there's no problem. Of course, I want to thank Liz. And, and everybody, I'm gonna miss you guys, but I'm gonna see you in some way. On a different, I'm gonna watch you guys, no, just kidding. I'm looking at you. So anyway, so I'm really, really proud of the, of this commission because I'm part of it, no, just kidding. But I, I'm, I'm just, you guys are so professional. Chair Tao, you've been a good chair, as well as Tim has been a very good vice chair. And everybody from Bill, from all of you guys. I would like to thank also Attorney de Los Angeles for, for your contribution. And also Jessica and, and of course Ned, what can I say? Ned is a great leader, a great manager and knowledgeable and patient. And he knows his direction and he knows where he's going and he gets there smoothly. Thank you all very much. I'll miss you guys.
Well, thank you, Councilmember-elect Chua, we, we, we appreciate having time with you on, on the commission. And we'll look forward to having you serving the, the city of Milpitas in a different capacity in going forward. And I forgot to, to, to say our thanks to, uh, City Attorney, Mr. de Los Angeles for joining us this, this year. And we appreciate your, your presence and, and keeping us in line. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blazo, please.
I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. See you next year.
Yes.
Thank you. And Chair would also like to extend it, you know, the happy holidays to all for all of, all of you who, who, who practiced this particular holiday tradition. And for all those, for all of those who, who don't, I'd like to wish, you know, a joyous, joyous, joyous season and, and enjoying the, the season sharing with everyone around you. And we, we, you know, we're all together as, as one in the city. We appreciate the opportunity to all be neighbors. And, and this, and this city called Milpitas, we appreciate it. And there's no other new business items and I'd love the Chair to go ahead and read off the, some required language. Any person agreed by the, any final decision of any board, commission or department head to the city of, city of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the city council by filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within twelve calendar days of the day of said decision and paying the required fee. That this time limit shall be strictly enforced. And on that, on that note there, and understand our city clerk is also gonna be leaving us as well. And we want to take this public moment here to thank Ms. Lavelle for her years of service with the city of Milpitas. And we want to wish her well and in going forward. Well, thank you very much. And do I have a motion for adjourn?
Yes. Really quick, we have one more significant retirement in the city of Milpitas. We have our police chief, Armando. He will be retiring at the end of the month. And I don't know, he's probably not watching, but just in case, just want to say thank you so much for your years of dedication in Milpitas. And Commissioner Chua, you've been on the Planning Commission for a while, both as an alternate and a member. And so, congrats, thank you so much for all of your work. And I look forward to possibly working with you in the future from, with Planning Commission and City Council. I know we have some joint meetings coming up next year and I look forward to that.
I, I just want to make sure I didn't skip on Liz. I mentioned you, Liz, right?
In common knowledge, that Liz is amazing.
You're, you're very welcome.
Yeah.
Evelyn, I wish you luck on the council. I'll be watching you.
We will all be watching you.
I'm watching you guys. I watch the Planning Commission, so.
Well, everybody, this is a public meeting, so it's, it's recorded. So your, your, every, every actual words will be, will be closely, closely watched. And so do I have a, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I'm sorry, was it Commissioner Blazo's motion and Vice Chair Elcorn's second, correct?
Sure, let's do that, second.
Great, do, do I have an eye for, for this?
I'll miss you, Evelyn.
Everyone.
You guys are awesome.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Appreciate it.